Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, May 26 special Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thank you for being here with us today. We've got a short agenda, and before we get to that, we will start by reading our role, and we have some of our councilors joining us remotely again today.
Council members Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Knightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
Sale.
Here.
Starr.
Here.
Staley.
Here.
All right, I'd ask that you stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to item three, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion on that.
Move approval?
Second Sale.
All right, motion approved by Selberg and seconded by Sale. Any discussion, council? Okay, we'll vote on that, please.
Council members Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. So we'll move on to our first item, item number four.
Item four, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota repealing ordinance number 47-20, adopting the Sioux Falls Board of Health Business Regulations pertaining to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 dated May 1, 2020.
Good afternoon, Jill.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Jill Franken, Public Health Director with the city of Sioux Falls. As you consider the next two items before you for this special city council meeting, we have a few updates that we promised you related to COVID in Sioux Falls. And if we start, though, by reminding ourselves of what we set out for our objectives within the EOC. How are we doing? Good. What we set out as our response priorities or objectives of the EOC, I think it's important every time that we're making decisions that we remind ourselves of the objectives that we said we would follow throughout this time and throughout the pandemic, is to limit and slow the spread and slow down the number of and spread of illnesses and deaths, to preserve continuity of community essential functions, to minimize social disruption, minimize economic impact, and coordinate messaging to keep the public informed. We also have told you that we would continuously, which we have and will continue to do, review, reassess, and realign. And so that's what we've done each and every time we've come before you and what we're here today to do as well. So to get us started, we have, as promised, some new information, some new trajectory of our cases, all good news, modeling, which is good news as well, and Albert Schmidt's going to go over that with us at this time, so I'm going to turn it over to Albert.
Counsel, thank you for having us here today. Albert Schmidt, CSU Falls Planning, also the EOC planning division. So the first slide we have in front of you today is one of the important trackers that we've been following based on the CDC guidance, using a 14-day trend, trying to show that we have a negative case or declining in our cases. They do indicate they should use a three-day rolling average, so just looking at this number, for instance, today's number, 526, includes an average from 526, 525, and 524. And so that's true for every date on there. That's the three-day average for that date plus the two days prior. And so as you can see, using this graph, our daily new cases is on a downward trajectory from the four, for over a 14-day period. So that's one of the first things that they look at in saying from CDC guidance, if you should be looking at rolling back any of these things, look for this. There are some second ones out there as well, and one of the things you should note is that one of the guidances that they have out there for this kind of following is you don't want too many days of a gain in cases, and so they say five days. So you can have up to five days of gain. So in this specific 14-day period, you can see on the 14th, we increased from the 14th to 15th, but then we went back down again, so that was only one day. And so then we were fine. And then on the 22nd to the 23rd, we also increased, but that was, again, only a one-day increase, so we were fine. So, just for instance, they're digging deeper into that side of it. So the most important thing we're probably bringing to you forward today is talking about what we think the future is going to hold as we go forward in this pandemic, especially over the summer months here. And we've updated our model, and some of the parameters that we've updated and changed, the most important ones, we've located here. The ones that have kind of the red text on the left indicate that the changes, and the black text where it hasn't changed is it's kind of stayed constant. And so the hospitalization rate's the only one we've really held constant throughout the whole, both of these last models. Should be important to note that the population is changing because we're only taking it from a snapshot in time, and so everybody who got infected beforehand, we're trying to take out of the model because they're not going to get reinfected from this model standpoint. So that's the biggest change for that one thing. Hospital length of stay is probably the single most effective change that we've done here. Our initial models came from the best available data we had, and that was regionally from Minnesota Department of Health, saying that the hospital stay was going to be about 13 days on average for a COVID patient. We've had enough cases going on now that we feel comfortable using local data, and that has been less, far less, only six days, luckily. And so that effect changes quite a few things, because if you think about the turnover on these beds, you can have two patients in the time you would have had one patient on a 12 or 13 day. So that allows for that number of beds needed to really be reduced quite a bit. The other side of it that we look at is social distancing percentages. Our last model had us at about 25%. This new model, more complicated, but we started off looking at about a 40% distancing for the next week or so, and then we looked at different trajectories, as you'll see in the next graph, of 30, 20, or 10%. What we're really looking at here is kind of the next one, days doubling. We're trying to predict logically how many days it's going to take for our cases to double. Originally, we anticipated six days to double, and now we're thinking it's closer to 16 days with that 40%. And so that's kind of where we're able to feel like we're going. With the model that you're seeing here, you could see there's four lines shown. The lowest one is a 40% social distancing curve, a 16-day doubling curve. We don't anticipate that we'll be able to stay on that line. That's why you see the kind of the branch coming off there with three different options or three different levels at a 30, 20, and a 10. That's going from the bottom to the top percent of social distancing. So we feel that based on our modeling, that you can project that out to about June 2 very comfortably at the 40%, and then after that point, we need to make some changes. One thing to really note here when you're looking at this model side of it is that there's show, it looks like there's kind of a peak on these lines here. We're not 100% certain that that's going to be a peak, but that's comfortably where we can kind of project out to, because then it starts to get much more uncertainty with the levels of projections we have. So we're trying to give you the best available data that we feel that we have to project out, and that's kind of where we're at. One of the things, if you want to think back to where we've looked at and thought we could be at, just to give you a reference point, our first model, today, we estimated that we might have 625 hospitalizations. Our second model, we thought maybe we'll only be at 472. And our third model had us at 55, which is the one we're showing today, and today's actual happened to be 55. Now, one of the important things to note when you're looking with numbers this low, and again, we're lucky that we're looking at numbers this low, but the negative side that you should all take into consideration is that with numbers at this point, the fluctuation can be significant. Five cases here, five cases there will make a big visual difference in that case, whereas if you're doing it with hundreds of cases and you were off by five, it wouldn't look nearly the same to you. So just something to think about as we're going forward, and we keep on bringing this data back to you and updating the public on what we're seeing come through for the actuality of what we're seeing. With that, I'll head it back.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Albert. So if you want to just keep it on that slide for a little bit, you know, you can see that kind of gold trending is our actual hospitalization rates. And so, boy, I mean, we were projecting that we could be anywhere, well, you see it here on the, on the first model was 625 hospital days at the peak. And that was based on all the kind of modeling that everybody else was doing across the country. And so it was using the best information we had at the time to make our best projections. And then you saw, you can see the second model was taking us to 472 at our peak, and that in actuality, we've seen about a high of a little over 70. And so really, from that first model to where we've seen a little over 70, that's a little less than a 10%, or it's about 10% of what we projected. So again, we're using the best information with the best modeling and analytics that's out there for us to be able to utilize, and we'll continue to do that going forward. But the good news, I think for us as a community right now, is based on our best projecting, we do not see that our hospital systems will be in, that the demand will exceed their capacity to be able to provide care for us. There's a big space in between where we're maxing out their capacity and where we think the demand will be. So that's the good news for making decisions today. But I, I just, you know, want to remind you that not only were we doing this modeling, but the state also had us doing modeling that was putting us at, even most recently, with their latest modeling, at 2,200 cases at peak on one given day across the state of South Dakota. So I think, bottom line, it's good news. We feel really good about where we're heading with our trajectory, our 14-day trajectory. We feel really good about where we feel we're going to be at for hospitalizations, and therefore, you know, I feel as if I can fully support, and those of us in the EOC can fully support repealing the no-mingling ordinance at this time, and I know administration is also brought that forward as a supportive measure. So in addition, you know, we're going to continue now to look at this every single day. We'll continue monitoring this every single day. We'll continue to review, reassess, and realign as needed, and you'll be getting updates from us regularly. And so just as we've been nimble now in pulling back on and repealing this ordinance, we'll bring you information if we need to impress upon you the need to perhaps do something again, because COVID is still present in our community. It still has the potential to cause, you know, illness and disease in our community, and so we need to be vigilant in our efforts. You know, we've seen a couple of communities around us where they, I mean, you would have never imagined that Minneapolis would be sitting in a position that they were with the measures that they took. And, you know, just last week, they were alerting hospitals in the region because their ICU beds were filling up, and they were at 95% to their full capacity for their ICU beds. And you saw, you could see what was happening in Sioux City as well. Very fortunate we haven't had those circumstances here in our community. So again, the degree, we need to continue to monitor. We need to continue to be assessing. We need to continue to realign as we need to. But at this time, I feel very comfortable also about the recommendation for the resolution going forward and reminding our community of the importance of what we need to do together as one Sioux Falls, to be really making sure that we're staying as vigilant as possible in this time period. So you can see, I just want to briefly just review a few things that are in that resolution, and then I'll sit down. I'm sorry I'm doing this kind of out of order, but it seemed logical for me to do that. But that safe practices is in section one. That really talks about what people need to be doing for good respiratory hygiene. And also, it does speak to the fact that people should strongly consider wearing cloth face coverings when they are out in public areas outside of their home. And so we do, we did put that in, and I feel really strongly that we should be highly encouraging that and recommending that to folks. This next section is really speaking to section two, vulnerable populations, and the things that we would ask our vulnerable populations to continue to do, that they've been doing such a good job in up to this point. And then section three is really reminding healthcare people about how they should be engaging healthcare and reminding them to call ahead. That's still an ask that our health systems are asking their community to do is call ahead when they are feeling sick. And then section four is really the things we need to be mindful of around mental and emotional health, and that has been a really, I know it's been important for this community as a whole to be really mindful of the fact that mental and emotional health is definitely a consideration. And then lastly, section five is really around businesses and asking our businesses to say they should exercise good judgment and follow recommendations of the CDC, the State Department of Health, and other health experts to protect the health safety of their employees as well as their patrons. And so that's, in essence, what we have before you today. Thank you all so much for what you've done thus far, and I'm sure this won't probably be the end of the line. I really try and emphasize to folks when we talk about things like rightsizing our EOC, talk about things like we're now repealing this ordinance, that we, that doesn't mean the work stops. And until we have a vaccine or we have effective treatment, this work needs to continue, and I thank you for being part of that journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item today? Come on up, young man.
Good afternoon. Sorry about that. I'll make sure I don't. Good afternoon, everyone. Jeff Griffin, President of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, and you should have all received a letter from us last Friday supporting the reduction and the restrictions that you set forth, and I just wanted to come and reinforce the positives of what we're seeing and to commend you guys for what you're doing. I'm sure some of you visit with colleagues across the country. I do the same, and I see in communities that aren't being responsive, some more anxieties and some more punishments upon their local economies. And it's all, I think what you guys are doing, following the data, trusting the numbers, and being willing to make those changes speaks a lot to the community of Sioux Falls. And I want to assure you, our chamber members, I see them sharing resources with each other. They are aware, they're vigilant. We're not preaching, you know, spike the football was a term used. We're obviously preaching courageous caution on their part, and we're seeing a great deal of that. So I also want to reinforce something we're doing with our members, that there's a great deal of personal responsibility that we expect from our members, from our community, and that seems to be a lost art sometimes in our world. My son is due to go back to college in the fall. There was a meeting about restrictions they're putting in and places they're putting in, and I was amazed at some of the parents who immediately jumped on, well, if somebody gets sick, you know, who's to blame? And I thought, you know, you have personal responsibility here. Rosie and I have a decision if we want to send our son back to college or not in the fall. We make that decision, because what the college presidents are doing is not sugarcoating it. They're making plans for when that happens, not if it happens. And I think you guys have created an atmosphere where we're going to be nimble enough to respond to that. But it's no small thing, so please don't take it for granted what you're doing. I have, and then I'll sit down, but one, I think you'll enjoy this story. I found a place to get a haircut in town, so we're all, I mean, aside from the angle that that camera gets, it's looking pretty good. So it was a social media post about businesses responsibly opening up, and a friend of mine from another state where they're still closed down, she and her husband are traveling to Sioux Falls this weekend to celebrate their wedding anniversary, and we have them, Terry and I got them hooked up with a hotel, a salon, and a restaurant. And they just want to get away, and they want to come to a place that's being reasonable. And you're keeping emotion high, or not emotion high, you're keeping confidence high, I should say, and we appreciate that. So let us know if we can help. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else here to speak on this today? All right, councilors, you got questions for Jill today? Counselor Sale, start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jill, I have just one quick question for you on the charts that Albert put, that the updated model parameters, we've adjusted the estimated population from 259, 153 to 225 based on the fact that we assume that there's 44,000 infected people.
Yeah.
My question is, can you become reinfected with the disease?
Well, counselor, that's a good question, and certainly that's what they are studying right now. The research has not been able to support one way or the other whether or not you can be reinfected, but there is some hopefulness based on what they're finding, that there is some level of immunity for a period of time, but they are not confident yet in saying how long that immunity will last. So it may take months, it could be a year, it could be, but it is possible. At this time, they don't know whether or not you could be reinfected.
Just one quick follow-up. So you're confident that we can adjust the numbers from 259 to 225?
Yes, and what that takes into account is taking the number of cases that we know have occurred in our area, Minnehaha and Lincoln County, and giving it a factor times 10, because that's what you're typically thinking about when you think about based on the number of positive cases you know are out there. There is sort of a standard rule that there's probably about 10 times that in your community, and so that's what that's taken into account. And so we remodeled based on that assumption.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for Jill? Counselor Staley.
Well, first of all, Jill, thank you. I know this has been a very difficult journey for you, and you've been there, you've taken the questions, you've worked with the medical community, and so I appreciate that. As people are asking us about, I just did an interview this morning with Argus about rescinding this, I'm using the gauge of the hospitalizations to say that gives me assurance that we're not spiking, going to the curve that we had predicted. As I'm looking at this graph, the COVID 14-day trend, could you go back to that, please? The thing, the thing that I'm going to be mindful of is that, are we talking like a two-week period since, well, was that last Friday that we opened things up?
It's been about 18 days.
And so I did say publicly, and I will say this again, I think that enforcement of the ordinance as it is has probably been a challenge, because I think there have been gatherings of people in certain bars that have been closer than, or maybe more compacted than the 50% occupancy. So this is, makes sense if we can enforce something that we're going to be discarding it, so to speak. But I know all of us have gotten photos of these gatherings of people very closely situated. Looking at the graph, it's looking like that in and of itself isn't spiking out, isn't creating some kind of a hotspot. So that's positive, right? I mean, that, so because that's part of, as we're, now we're going to loosen the regulations for restaurants. I visited a restaurant last Friday. They reached out to me, and they said, Teresa, we don't know if our patrons are going to come back, even if we can open everything up. That's the other challenge, is people are just gun-shy to come out. But anyway, I went there, and they've got their distancing and everything. Now, as they come together, because now they're going to be able to have their tables as close together as they want, right, and as many people, people can mingle and stand at the bar and everything legally, they can. So at some point, we got to just, we're watching those numbers to make sure that that doesn't create just multiple hotspots throughout our community. Am I, am I kind of reading that correctly?
Well, and I think it's, counselor, you're correct that while we might, you might be considering a repeal of our existing ordinance. I think it's pretty clear when you look at both what we're, what would be recommended in the resolution, as well as state guidance and federal guidance. There is guidance out there telling restaurants what they should be paying attention to. You know, there is guidance around there for other venues and how they should be social distancing. So whether there isn't maybe a legal, you can't get charged with something, I think most of our businesses in our community are going to take that very seriously and be very careful in making sure they're not spreading part of the problem of spreading COVID.
Absolutely, but I do think, I think the six-foot table requirement, at least the business owner I was talking with said that that was like cramping their style a little bit. So they're, the capacity is what they're hungering for, because, you know, they've been hurt financially on the situation. So that's, I guess, I'm going to be watching, well, I may not be here to watch the graph, but if I am here, I will be continuing to watch that graph and feel very grateful if it doesn't increase.
I'm going to go to the phones. Any three councilors on the phones have any questions for Jill?
I do. Counselor Kylie.
Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
It is very encouraging to see what our numbers have been in recent weeks. And since Smithfield has started and did extensive testing, we expected to see an uptick in the number of COVID-19 cases identified, but since that time, basically, our COVID numbers have been just low double digits. I mean, today it's in the 20, less than 20, I believe, and it's been that way for several days. And the hospitalizations continue to remain low, and we can manage, at least our health systems can manage the hospitalizations to date, and they could manage it even when Smithfield was spiking. My question is, do you know what the hospitalization rate in Sanford and Navara is from communities around us? Because I get the data for South Dakota, specifically Minnehaha and Lincoln, but I'm not getting data from some of our surrounding communities like Worthington and Sioux City, where some of their individuals may be coming to Sioux Falls. Can you address that?
Yeah, Counselor Kylie, that's a good question, and that is one of the factors that we know is possible, that in their daily hospitalization rates at both Sanford and Navara, it is possible that there could be people outside of Minnehaha and Lincoln County that are actually in those numbers. We've always known that that's a factor, but that also is a factor that can create the kind of demand that could exceed their supply, which could impact our community regardless of where those people are coming from. So we've just kind of accepted that that's something that we don't have absolute information on, but that it still becomes part of what we have to monitor in terms of narrowing that supply-demand gap.
Thank you. Well, our goal has never been to stop the transmission of COVID-19. It has always been to flatten that curve and to be able to manage hospitalizations and not overwhelm our healthcare systems. And I think it's, we've proven that, we haven't. And I think a sign of good leadership is to make adjustments when we have new information available. And I do believe that you and the mayor and the administration have been providing us with good information so that we can make good choices based on that information available. At this point in time, while I did have some concerns initially about what might happen after we opened things up again for restaurants and bars a few weeks ago, I'm not seeing that surge. And as I mentioned earlier, even when we did see a surge due to Smithfield, we were still well within the capability of the hospital systems. So I will be supporting this measure this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Councilors on the phone, any other questions for Jill while she's up here?
Mayor, I'll chime in if you don't mind.
Go ahead, counselor.
Okay. No questions for Jill. I appreciate the charts and all of the information. I think it's important for us to continue to monitor that while also being mindful that some of those charts, we do have to continue to pivot and adjust. And so I'm thankful that this ordinance is being brought forward today. I think it's important of that balance. Counselor Knightzert, I hate to steal your words. The other day, I heard you say that the economy is the people. Healthcare is the people, and it just really, I mean, it had just the most lightbulb moment that we have to continue to balance that, because all of it does include the people. And so, you know, hearing these stories of businesses really struggling and then some of their employees relapsing, so there's detriment happening beyond COVID that we're all aware of, and so we have to be certainly mindful of that. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with a couple businesses as well, and, you know, one of those I sat down with my nephew that runs the gateway, and just hearing the challenges that he has and some of the changes and modifications of being really outside-the-box thinkers of adding a new patio and changing their other patio for more of a private party feel. So if somebody does want to host a birthday party, they're making those exclusive in the walls in the back area versus having that out in the open, so that they can still responsibly social distance their business, because it is an open atmosphere. And just seeing a And just seeing a lot of the businesses take that responsibility to the next level is really important, and so I'm grateful this is here, and I strongly support it and feel like we need to start kind of moving as much as we can back to that new normal and not continue to move those goalposts for the economy moving forward as well.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Counselor Selberg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would reiterate a couple of those points, too. I'm going to be supportive today of this, but I think it all comes down to, again, as we say over and over, personal responsibility is the key to all of this. And as it says right in the resolution, it's reminding folks, you got to stay diligent in your actions and behavior to slow the spread. So it's no time, again, to put your guard down, relax. I think some of us have been seeing some of this footage over the weekend nationwide, where it looks like people are kind of thinking the party's over, and I certainly hope that people are being a little more responsible around here, at least that's what I'm seeing so far, being out and about in a couple of the restaurants and establishments I've been in. So I hope people will, again, stay diligent, keep working on it, keep their space. If you're feeling like you're not, you don't need to go somewhere, if you don't have to, if you feel safer at home, please do that, but let's continue to move cautiously forward so we're not back here again anytime soon. I'm all for a special meeting or two, but I think we're about special-meetinged out, so let's hope this is it for a while.
All right. Any other questions for Jill? Someone want to make a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Second. Sale.
All right. We have a motion to approve and a second by Counselor Sale. Discussion, Counselor Selberg.
I would make a motion to amend the last whereas clause to read, whereas Sioux Falls Board of Health convened a meeting on May 26, 2020, and approved the Board of Health recommended guidelines to slow the spread of the virus causing COVID-19 and to protect vulnerable populations by a vote of six to one.
Second. Sale.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale on that, and that's simply just to put in the record the meeting that was held earlier today. All right. Any other discussion on that one? All right. Let's vote on that amendment, please.
Councilmembers, Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
All right. The amendment passes eight to zero, so we're back to the main motion as amended. Other discussion, Counselor Sale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to point out a few things for those that might be taking the afternoon to listen to this, very important this afternoon. A few things were brought up today about our updated model parameters, and as we go through, you have to remember that these parameters were brought forth by things that had happened in other countries and in other parts of the country. So we're seeing different formula evolve through time. One of the biggest, of course, is how long people are staying in the hospital. And the reason we started this was to keep the hospitals from being overwhelmed, not to keep the disease in check, because we cannot do that unless everybody locks the door and never comes out. So as we go forward, you might pick apart a little bit of the formula, if you're a mathematician or statistician, but the crux of it is hospitalizations. It's not about, to me, it's not about closing the economy, it's not about opening the economy, it's about community healthcare. So that's why I feel safe at this point to go ahead and vote to rescind some of the restrictions we've had. We've had a mayor that has constantly, for the past three months, set an example for all of us by wearing a face mask, by socially distancing, by continuously reaching out to every type of media he could to recommend that the citizens of Sioux Falls be safe in what that's about. The governor of South Dakota declared an emergency, and she also put a stay-at-home order in for those most vulnerable in our community. Without those actions happening, we would be in a tremendously different spot than we are today. Here it is, and I had hoped that the first of June, we could lift some things, and we're going to be able to do that. Now, if we continue to be diligent about this, hopefully life can get back to some sort of normal. If we do not be diligent, just because the rules are lifted, we are going to be in a terrible position in three weeks, three months from now, and this council will have to come back and put restrictions back on the community. So I encourage people, I encourage businesses, I encourage private citizens, please stay safe as we go forward, do the things you need to do to keep the hospitalization rates down, so we don't have to come back again in a terribly different position. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Counselor Staley.
Oh, I do have to weigh in on a comment that we have been saying, well, I haven't said it, but my colleagues have said adamantly over the last few meetings, that our goal was just to keep the hospitalizations down and that we weren't going to prevent anyone from getting COVID. And I have to say that I think there's more to it than that. Those people I know who, senior citizens, they've been staying in their homes, they don't want to get COVID. I mean, they don't want to go to the hospital, ever. So to say to people, well, we just want to make sure that when you, you know, that we can kind of measure out when you go to the hospital, I don't think that resonates with these people. They don't want to get sick. So that's why people have been careful about visiting people. I've got younger people who have children, they won't let their grandparents come and visit, because they don't want to be co-mingled with this virus, the potential of it. So there's more to it than just, I've never bought onto the thing that it's just only the hospitalization capacity. I think it's also keeping people healthy. So, you know, taking the time to know when you can, the virus has kind of minimized itself is going to be important as well.
Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion on this item? All right. Hearing none, we're going to vote on the motion as amended.
Councilmembers, Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
All right. That item passes eight to zero, and we'll move on to item five.
Item five, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, encouraging the people of Sioux Falls to be diligent in their actions and behavior to slow the spread of the virus that causes COVID-19 and to protect vulnerable populations.
Jill, are you speaking to that?
I think my previous comments covered it pretty well, but I just, I also want to just remind you that the Board of Health did meet today, and you referenced that in the amendment earlier, and they are supportive of this resolution, but they are very much wanting our community to continue to follow what's in the resolution very closely. And then also, Dr. Wilde and Dr. Elliott, who served wonderfully in our unified command as the chief medical officers of both Sanford and Avera, also asked the community to continue to be vigilant at this time, and so I just want to make those comments for your consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Jill. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this resolution this afternoon? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jill on this item? Any questions on the phone for Jill?
Move to approve.
Second. Sale.
All right. We have a motion to approve the item by Counselor Selberg, seconded by Counselor Sale. Discussion, counsel. Counselor Selberg.
Mr. Mayor, we do have a motion to amend. It's pretty lengthy here. I believe our city clerk, Tom Greco, is going to read the amendment for us.
Yes, council member. The motion is to amend the sixth whereas clause to read, whereas, as of 12 noon on May 26, 2020, within Minnehaha County, there are 3,289 total confirmed cases of COVID-19, 488 active cases of COVID-19, 2,758 individuals recovered from COVID-19, and 43 deaths linked to COVID-19. A total of 16,172 COVID-19 tests have been reported by the State Department of Health in Minnehaha County. And the seventh whereas clause to read, whereas, as of 12 noon on May 26, 2020, within Lincoln County, there are 233 total confirmed cases of COVID-19, 42 active cases of COVID-19, 191 individuals recovered from COVID-19, and no deaths linked to COVID-19. A total of 2,465 COVID-19 tests have been reported by the State Department of Health in Lincoln County. And to amend the eighth whereas clause to read, whereas, as of 12 noon on May 26, 2020, within the state of South Dakota, there are 4,653 total confirmed cases of COVID-19, 1,075 active cases of COVID-19, 3,528 individuals recovered from COVID-19, and 50 deaths linked to COVID-19. A total of 35,982 COVID-19 tests have been reported by the State Department of Health in the state. And to amend the last whereas clause to read, whereas, the Sioux Falls Board of Health convened a meeting on May 26, 2020, and approved the Board of Health recommended guidelines to slow the spread of the virus that causes COVID-19 and to protect vulnerable populations by a vote of six to one.
All right. Thank you, Tom. That's seconded by Counselor Sale. So motion to amend those with the current data from Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that amendment, counsel? All right. Let's vote on the amendment, please.
Councilmembers, Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Okay. That passes eight to zero. Now we're back to the main motion as amended. Discussion on this item, counsel. Any discussion on the phone? All right. Let's take a vote on this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Staley, go ahead.
I just had a comment, just so the public understands. This is a resolution, and I think the word that we see on the screen here, the word of the day on a resolution is that it's a statement of encouragement. It invites the entities addressed to come along. There's no binding force, and I just have to make mention that, you know, we're addressing how businesses should respond in this, where we're kind of taking off where that ordinance aspect fell off. We're asking businesses to adhere to a certain principal energy that the city thinks is important. And this, I just have to herald back to a week ago, when we brought forth the same kind of a resolution addressing tenants and landlord and their relationships. The same thing, it was a resolution, only inviting people to come along and show mercy and show the best empathy possible to help the situation. This is exactly what the mayor is proposing now. It's the same thing. It's a resolution. I know some of my colleagues had a problem with the resolution last week, but here we are again. It's coming from the mayor. I'm going to support this. But just to say that resolutions do have their place. Resolutions are beneficial, they're a statement of encouragement, and although they're not binding with any kind of a fine or an ordinance impact, they are to be used and utilized. And if I'm around after June 2, I'm going to continue to bring those forth to address issues that will benefit the citizens. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion, counsel? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Erickson.
I'll be brief. I support this resolution. I think it's a good idea. I think that it is the guidance. I think the difference from last week to this week is I didn't support last week. There was many flaws with it and many issues, while the counselor makes a great point. It isn't legally binding, it's the guidance, and so I didn't support it because I didn't support the resolution that it was there. This one, I do, and I do think that it's the right step. So I hope that we can pass this one and really kind of go back to just letting us all be responsible adults as we move about the city and decide how we want to run our own businesses. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, counselor. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Let's take a vote then, please.
Councilmembers, Breckie.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nitzer.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
All right. That item passes eight to zero. Before I take the motion adjourned, I want to thank the council for your attendance at these special meetings. We probably had half dozen or so since COVID began. We're probably going to have some more, but I do appreciate that, especially when it's during the day like this. So thank you for that. Kurt wants a few more, it looks like, so I'll get a few more special meetings on the books, Counselor Sale. Move to adjourn. Starr.
Second. Sale.
All right. Motion adjourned by Starr and seconded by Sale. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed?
Yes.
We're adjourned anyway. We are adjourned.[1782.13]